Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're going to move to our next presentation, which is B3, the update on homelessness-related issues. As you know, a few weeks ago, we welcomed our new Homeless Strategy Officer, Diana Gray, to our team, and we are just grateful for her to join us at the city. And really, the depth of partnerships and collaboration that she's been able to bring to the city is extensive. And we're thrilled to have her come forward today, talk a little bit about what she's learned over the last several weeks, and also what current projects that they are working on and the path forward. But to begin with, I'm going to start with Director Hayden Howard and allow her to tee up this discussion before Diana joins us. Director Hayden Howard.
Good morning. Thank you, Spencer. About a year ago, we sent a memo to Mayor and Council to talk about the realignment of the Homeless Strategy Office. At that time, we created the Homeless Services Division in Austin Public Health, and we continue to work very closely with the leads for this priority area. And we began providing weekly updates and discussing strategies in order to strengthen the work that was happening within the city. At that time, we formalized the City Management Executive Team, and we assigned three full-time employees. And we began our work with our external consultants. In February of 2020, Bella Carmen was named the interim Homeless Strategy Officer. We want to thank her for the work that she was able to do by standing up for the division and continuing to move us forward. Under her leadership, we welcomed the consultants in March of 2020 and began working very closely with them. At that time, we were having discussions about our motel acquisitions and moving that initiative forward as well. And then, as you all know, COVID-19 efforts began shortly afterwards. We are very excited at the beginning of this year as Diana Gray has moved into the position of our Homeless Strategy Officer. And we will continue to work together with Mayor and Council, our community across the city, to move us forward. At this time, I will transition to Diana. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. I believe we have a presentation that can be shared on screen. So first of all, I just want to say thank you for having me as your Homeless Strategy Officer. But it's not the presentation. There we go. Today marks three weeks in the position, and I have had the opportunity to meet and speak with several of you, one-on-one or in meetings about the many projects that are underway currently. And I just want you to know that that has been so important in informing the beginning of my work and that I do intend to make time for each council member to just sit down and listen to what is happening in your district and any specific concerns that you might have. I have been in Austin for about 30 years, and I have been doing affordable housing and working homelessness for about the last 20. So my background really started with work in the Springdale-Webber Bell neighborhood and in St. John's, doing first-time homeownership for low-income households. And from there, I had the opportunity to work with a couple of national nonprofits, Enterprise Community Partners, that is really focused on affordable housing generally. And I worked for their loan fund, structuring housing development finance. And then, about 10 years ago, had the opportunity to start the Texas Office of Corporation for Supportive Housing, which is one of the nation's leading nonprofits around creating that permanent housing for folks with long-term needs who will have ongoing service needs and ongoing needs for deep subsidy. Having said that, through those years working with national organizations, my work was really rooted in Texas and continued to be rooted in Austin. And so, I stepped into this position knowing our community and our community providers quite well and have had the opportunity to work with the city directly over the years also. And so, one of the assets that I feel like was given to me coming in is that I know how dedicated and bright both city staff and members of the community are. And so, feel very confident moving in that we're going to be able to move forward together very well. Stephanie mentioned it, but I will also say that, you know, one of the benefits and treasures that I've had over time was the opportunity to work directly with the Homeless Services Division in this first year, as it's been stood up, and working directly with Bella Carmen, who has carried a tremendous, incredible load and will continue to be just a huge asset to the division. So I want to thank her for her work and just express how much I value her. So today's presentation is going to be quite high-level. As those of you who have been councilmembers for a long time know that the full briefing on homeless activities can take hours. We're going to try not to do that today, but particularly because we have a couple of new councilmembers, I thought we would do some high-level description of the system and some of the city's activities, and then just talk briefly about some of the new things that are underway, areas I think we are gaining momentum, and also some of the priorities that are on deck that we hope to tackle very soon. So we can go on to the next slide. So these are, I think, really the most critical data points in terms of homelessness in Austin. On any given night, about 2,500 individuals in Austin are experiencing homelessness. And of those, almost 1,600 are unsheltered. So they're either in a tent or under a bridge, or sleeping in a car or an abandoned building. And we all, of course, are acutely aware of the crisis around unsheltered homelessness that we're experiencing right now and the urgency of confronting that. On any given night, of course, there are 2,500 folks or so, but people cycle in and out of homelessness over time. Over the course of an entire year, we understand that about 9,000 Austinites experience at least one day or night of homelessness. Our system capacity, the beds and program slots that we have to confront this are unfortunately inadequate, as many communities confront, and we will be working to expand that. We have about 500 emergency shelter beds, acknowledging that right now, because of COVID-19, that number is substantially reduced to reduce transmission. About 120 transitional housing beds, those are primarily for domestic violence survivors and, in some cases, for youth and young adults. 463 rapid rehousing beds, and then about 1,100 units of permanent supportive housing. This data really all comes from ECHO, from their various HUD reporting tools and their homeless management information system. Let's go on to the next slide. So, you know, it's been impressed upon me that my title is the Homeless Strategy Officer, and what we really want this division to be about is strategy and coordination. And so, in thinking about my view of the key roles for the division, there are three areas that I wanted to touch on briefly. One is obviously the strategy centerpiece and planning. So we want to identify what our best interventions and strategies are, what's really going to work for us, and then think about how we fund those interventions, making sure that we're leveraging funds from the state, the feds, and the private sector as well, acknowledging that funding is limited and we want to use our dollars to the highest impact. And additionally, we will, with some frequency, decide that we need some deeper knowledge around a particular topic. And so, we hope to serve as that locus of expertise where when we find a need, we're able to source the best experts in the industry nationwide and bring them in to work with us. Barb Poppy and Associates and Matthew Doherty are two consultants that have been with us recently and have done amazing work for us and really helped us, particularly during the COVID crisis. You may also remember the National Alliance to End Homelessness came in and worked with us to look at our shelter strategies and how effective they are. The second piece is that cross-departmental support. The amount of work that is being done within the city across so many departments is stunning, and it takes quite a bit of effort to make sure that we are all aware of what everyone is doing and making sure that our efforts complement one another. And I think importantly, ensuring that across all of the different manifestations of our work around this issue, we are embodying our values around what our goals are, how we treat and respect people who are experiencing homelessness, et cetera. And then, in addition to the departments that are either providing direct services or working in the public space management area, of course, we will be working closely with Communications Function and with the Intergovernmental Relations Office on issues related to homelessness. Finally, there is so much work to be done within the city, but we have so many relationships externally facing in the community. Probably the most important partnership for my division will be that relationship with ECHO to make sure that we are supporting one another, holding one another accountable, and not duplicating effort. And then, there will be many collaborative efforts that some permanent and some that will be time-limited. We have recently been working with a public-private partnership that Deputy City Manager Nurya Rivera Vandermeide has put together for us to really work closely with the leaders of the primary nonprofit service providers and ECHO. And then, we also see a key role for us in the community engagement at the neighborhood level, both when neighbors are experiencing challenges in their areas or when we have an opportunity to bring an asset into a neighborhood to build permanent housing or to look at new strategies that we might deploy in those neighborhoods to really develop those strong relationships with the citizens themselves. Let's go ahead and move ahead. So this is a graphic that I'm not going to go into in detail, but it will be familiar to most of you. It is a framework that was presented to us through the Investing for Results Report that was developed by Barb Poppy and Associates. And I think it has provided us with a useful framework for thinking about the categories of effort that we have around the issue of homelessness. So I'm going to leave aside the reducing inflow for the moment. But crisis response is really about meeting that need where it exists in the moment of homelessness. So our shelter work, our outreach work, ensuring that people who are currently homeless have access to critical health services, et cetera. And then, the housing stabilization piece, which is really about getting the housing services, the housing stock and the housing subsidies to the people that need it to end their homelessness and to provide them the support that they'll need to remain stably housed. Finally, the third piece here is the public space management, which comprises all of the work we do that is not really this direct-service piece that impacts how we all experience our city, the ability of people experiencing homelessness to access resources in the public space, as well as all of the other citizens. And so, this touches on all of our public safety strategies as well as the cleanup efforts we have, et cetera, in those public spaces. Using that framework, if we'll move forward, I want to just touch on a few areas of primary activity in the city in these three categories. So of course, the city owns the arch and has a contract with Front Steps to run the shelter there. We have homeless outreach street teams, which are comprised of an APD officer, integral care behavioral health professional, and our community health paramedics that are in the encampments, talking to folks every day, addressing critical acute needs and making referrals to connect them to services. We fund Integral Care's PATH program, which is another outreach effort. And then, the Downtown Austin Community Court also plays an important role here in terms of interacting with people who walk in looking to access services, you know, what they are terming triage case management, helping people make that contact from the street. They also coordinate the Austin Homeless Advisory Council, which is a critical body for us, made up of people with lived experience of homelessness, so that we're communicating with the people who have the real expertise on the matter. We even have specialists on the Austin Public Library staff who have the opportunity to interact with our neighbors experiencing homelessness frequently. And so, APL has made the commitment to have some specialized staff to work with those library customers. The core, then, of ending homelessness is expressed in a variety of ways, both through a wide array of contracts that the city holds with nonprofit service providers and some direct services. Within Austin Public Health, probably the two largest rehousing types of contracts are rapid rehousing, expressed largely through our Best Single Source Plus program and our PSH service contracts. We also, through the Housing and Planning Department, focus on developing housing that we need that is low-barrier enough for people exiting homeless to qualify for. And we utilize not only our general obligation bond dollars there, but also some of the federal funds, home, CDBG, et cetera. Within Housing and Planning, as you know, we have also set aside some general obligation bonds specifically for acquisition of hotels. We also have a new program within Housing and Planning, which is a local housing voucher program. I'll speak a little bit more about in a minute, which is a really innovative way for us to ensure that we can operate these developments long-term. Downtown Austin Community Court also provides some of these longer-term services in terms of intensive case management, and they actually contract out with other nonprofit service providers for housing some of their clients who need that support to maintain housing stability. I'm not going to talk a lot about additional public space management activities. I've touched on most of that. I think a couple of things here that perhaps merit special mention are our Violet Bag Program, which distributes both trash bags and trash bins to encampments across the city to support the collection of refuse and safety and hygiene in those spaces. And a relatively new program, which is the Violet Keep Safe Personal Storage Program, which provides what are essentially identical to large trash bins, which are lockable, and people experiencing homelessness can store their items there without having to worry about carrying them on their person or leaving them unprotected. So let's move forward. As you well know, much of the last year for all of the city has been focused on our response to COVID-19. That has certainly been true in the Homeless Service Division and in its related and partner departments within the city. We have expanded access to food and to hygiene resources within encampments. We have opened five protective lodges, which are sites for people who are high-risk under the CDC guidelines for poor outcomes should they contract COVID-19. And those five hotels have a total capacity of about 300 rooms. Our current census is about 240 and rising. We had begun to decommission as we thought we were going to need to do at the end of last year. So the census had dropped, but we are now cleaning and preparing rooms and moving guests in daily. And then, I think the really exciting piece of that overall effort is that of guests who have been at the protective lodges. We have rehoused 149 rather than having them exit into homelessness. The Downtown Austin Community Court has responded not only by doing virtual dockets and having more walk-in services, but they have pitched in to staff the pro lodges and provide on-site case management there and will be providing some of the rapid rehousing services that we are able to expand because of some additional HUD Emergency Solution Grant Funds. Between the monies that the city has received and some dollars that TDHCA has passed through to local providers, we anticipate being able to house 550 additional households by the end of fiscal year '22, which is huge. So that has begun to move, and we're very excited that we're able to also focus those resources on those who are most vulnerable in terms of their health risks should they be infected with COVID-19. Something that is not a city resource, but we are partnering very closely with the Housing Authority of the City of Austin for, is that HACA was able to apply for and receive 100 mainstream vouchers, which essentially mirror housing choice vouchers. So those are long-term permanent subsidies for very low-income people, and they will be prioritized also for pro lodge guests. Finally, while this is not specific to people who are already experiencing homelessness, Housing and Planning has dedicated substantial resources to rent supports and eviction prevention so that we can stem the tide of people who are experiencing severe rent burdens or arrears in the face of job loss due to the pandemic. So let's move forward. So this is the most exciting slide from my perspective. I think that some of the pieces that I want to express today as I look forward to our work in the coming months are, A, items that I think we are implementing and are gaining momentum on, even if they have been, to some degree, in play for some time, pieces that we are actively planning, and then the priority next steps that we know are going to be really critical to our success moving forward. We will, in a while, go into executive session to discuss the acquisition of two additional hotels. The council initially set a goal of 300 units acquired for conversion to either bridge housing or permanent supportive housing. Should we acquire the two hotels that are on the agenda for Wednesday, we will be at or near that target. And I think there's a lot of opportunity to do more and to expand that strategy, particularly in the current climate and the current market. So we'd like to push forward on that. I mentioned the 550 households that we expect to be able to rehouse with the ESG dollars. We have started that work really just in the last couple of months of 2020, and so are picking up speed there and think that we will see a real impact in the coming months. In terms of ensuring that we are getting not only the hotel acquisition and conversion work moving, but also looking at the pipeline of our conventional housing development. So for example, Espero at Rutland, which will provide us with 170 units of very affordable housing and at least 44 units of permanent supportive housing. We've drawn together a working group that includes the Homeless Strategy Division, Housing and Planning, as well as both local housing authorities to look at deals as they emerge, opportunities that are presented to each of us in our different environments, and so that we are constantly communicating about what a project might need, how we might explore making it more feasible, or how we might support that work. And then, finally, Housing and Planning's Local Housing Voucher Program is using $3.6 million annually in housing trust fund monies. And the first commitment that they have made is to Espero at Rutland, and we have structured that to mirror project-based vouchers from our local housing authorities. And we think that this is really going to expand our ability to create sustainable PSH over time. So there are some pieces that are in planning or in the contracting process but have not hit the ground yet. APH has approved the expansion of Integral Care's PATH outreach team. And so, they are in the process of beginning the hiring process within their organization. We hope that we would see those folks on the ground soon. For Roadway Inn, we have received a proposal for an operator of the hotel, long-term. That would presumably be when it converted from pro lodge to use as bridge housing or shelter. But we are closer to being able to look at that facility as something that we could make choices about in terms of whether we keep it as part of the COVID-19 response or move it into a more general bridge housing role. The Homeless Service Division and ECHO have been sitting down regularly to work through our respective roles. You know, we are attached so closely in our day-to-day work, but one of the things that we heard very clearly from the Investing for Results Report was that we needed to spend some intentional time determining who was lead in particular areas and how the other entity or entities would support. So that discussion, I think, has been very fruitful already. And our intent is that that would result in a memorandum of understanding between the two organizations that would guide the overall relationship in addition to the contract that the city has funding ECHO's activities. Finally, we have reconvened the various funders that had committed to the Pay for Success initiative. We do not, at present, think that the Pay for Success structure is what we will utilize, but most of those funders remain very committed, and we believe that we can design a collaborative that will allow them to participate and for us to really model how we have many partners at the table supporting this work that is so important across governmental entities and private sector alike. Finally, in terms of what's immediately next on our plate, Spencer may have mentioned, and the mayor will probably talk about, a planned summit for February intended for the community at large, not just the city, to sit down and take a hard look at what it is we need to do to expand capacity in shelter, in rapid rehousing, in permanent supportive housing, and potentially in some other areas, but that we set hard number goals, that we identify timelines, we assign accountability, and that we all agree that we are collectively committed to reaching those goals. When that happens, I see it as our charge to come back to council and articulate for you what and how we think we can contribute to those goals, so that not only... So that not only are we working in partnership with both other jurisdictions and the private sector, but council and leadership also have clear metrics by which to hold my division accountable. Hand in hand with that, I think, is going to be a process by which we bring forth some recommendations around how we program our funding going forward. We do have some new fiscal year $21 available and we want to make sure that we get that money into the community quickly, but we're also very strategic about how we target it. The next piece, the next two pieces, of course, are very related and that is about how we more intentionally create connections with our unsheltered population and housing resources, how we proactively work with those living unsheltered in encampments and not just do outreach, but determine how we can most effectively and efficiently move them into housing. And also that we, as a community overall, have a consistent policies around public space management. And, and that ranges from not only which spaces are available for use, but under what circumstances, how public safety interacts with both people experiencing homelessness and their neighbors, et cetera. And so we understand that that is very pressing and something that is incumbent upon us to respond to. Finally, one of the, the pieces that was called out in the Investing for Results Report was a recommendation that APH and HSD look at the procurement and contracting process and tools around our homeless services. So that, I believe, will be a slightly longer process because we need to do some deep analysis and figure out really what the appropriate tools are, timing and criteria, but that is certainly on our, on our dashboard is something that we will be beginning to work on quite soon. So that is the summary of where I think we are now and I would welcome any questions.
Well, thank you, Diana, and just, it's great to have you on board and we're looking forward to your leadership in this area and the vast amount of expertise that you bring to this work. The hitting the ground running mentality that you've already had these few weeks is very evident and really appreciate the opportunity for you to provide this overview to the council today. With that, Mayor, we'll turn it back to you for questions from you and the council.
Colleagues, when we started this morning, we had talked about potentially taking a break at this point, going into executive session. I think we moved through the calendar here more rapidly than we had thought. So I think we could probably ask questions now, getting into executive session no later than 11:00. But let's see what, what happens so that we get that executive session. Ann?
I, I, Mayor, I would just suggest that getting into like a session at 11:00 really, really limits our ability to talk during executive session because it's only an hour. And, and I would prefer that we get into executive session by 10:30 because I think it's going to cut us short on that conversation if, if that's, that's just my suggestion.
Well, we could take the break and have the executive session on the motel and then come right back out to do questions, if people would prefer to, to do that. We have staff here, it may very well be that some of the staff's joining us in that executive session, discussion. I'm not sure. Do you all want to ask questions now about the homelessness generally or do you want to pause and go into the executive session on the issue of the motel strategy? Leslie?
I'm happy to go into executive session. I think that would be a good use of our time.
Okay, nodding of heads. Let's go ahead and do that, manager, and then we'll come right back out.